Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's May 16th, 8:30 a.m. Carl, would you please lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You have the minutes of May 14th. Do I have a motion?
Public forum.
Oh, excuse me, public forum. There isn't one here. Minutes.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Comment?
Comment under 12, Tracy. Mr. McKellen, he said he received it as well. That would be t- I did receive it, but I wasn't at the meeting. So that was somebody else who received it as well.
Okay, with that notation, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Abstain because I wasn't here.
No, Sheila, let's move.
I would move that, I would ask that we move Mr. Portley's. Since he was here for an earlier meeting, I would move that we move up Mr. Portley's portion of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim?
Thank you. The first item would be consider and take possible action on award of bid two, number two dash one six one seven, septic cleaning for the town and school facilities. The town went out to bid, as far as, there were three bidders, Woodfield Sanitation, Country Septic Services LLC, and A&amp;W Sanitation Company. Woodfield Sanitation has historically done the work the last couple of years for the town, done an incredible job, and they were the low bidder. It is recommended to award the, it is recommended that the bid be awarded to Woodfield Sanitation in the amount of $30,340.
Second. Someone to make a motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The second item was removed from the table, but it's, item on the bid number 15 dash one five one six is not resolved as yet, so I recommend that it be left on the table.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, last item is received proclamation from the governor regarding Public Works Week. Last week, we received a copy of a proclamation that was issued by His Excellency Daniel P. Malloy. It's an official statement. Do you want me to read it, or somebody else want to read it?
We have enough back.
We accept it.
Okay. It's, this week is considered Public Works Week from May 15th to May 21st, 2016. It was a very nice statement by the, by the governor.
We do appreciate all the efforts, especially this spring. I know, you know, you didn't get to have so much fun this summer, but certainly this spring, your department has done a great job.
They have been above and beyond.
Great. Okay, do, we don't need a motion to, do we need a motion to accept it?
No.
No?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any else? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. In lieu of, Sheila's still not here. Ed?
Sheila's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you behind there. Okay. Finance Director, Sheila Vaughn.
Good morning.
We have our reports for April. Ten months through, two months to go, we're in very good shape on the revenue. We collected 100% of our budget at the end of April for, on the, on the town local revenue, and we're at 99.9% when we got there in the state plan, both for the town and Board of Ed. So we've met our budget. Anything that we collect past April 30th is, will contribute to fund balance. And don't forget, we, we have three months more on tax collections and fire department revenue and youth and family services, so we're, we're in good shape with revenue. This is what I predicted last month.
Okay.
Any specific questions? We'll move on to expenditures. Expenditures, I have different glasses on today, so I can't read as well as usual. I really can't. We're at 85.4% compared to 83.2% last year. That's really just a timing issue at this point. There are encumbrances that are still outstanding, and they're a little more at 702 than they were last year. So that, that contributes to the, the change, you know, in, in having more obligated this year compared to last year. There's really no department that's, that has any issues. There will be some transfers at your next, for your next packet. They relate to salary transfers for some individual contract settlements that we've had, as well as some departments may be over at the department level because we had an extra payroll week in fiscal year 15, or fiscal year 16. That is going to cause those departments, some of the smaller departments to be over. So we'll correct that next month. Other than that, everything looks good.
Any questions?
On the medical, the medical is actually, we had another, well, actually the best, or close to the best one that we've had so far this year. I didn't have the stop-loss information, the catastrophic claims from Anthem as of Friday. Chances are I'll have it today for Board of Finance, but we've met our catastrophic claims threshold by $51,000. So we, we've covered our premium, and there's, there are several large claims now, as of last month. So it's unfortunate, but we, you know, at least we're covered as far as the insurance goes, and they'll, so I, I expect that May and June will also be low claims month, because those large claims will continue to be covered by the stop-loss insurance. So, you know, we will have a fairly sizable projected fund balance at June 30th of about $2 million, which is excellent.
So unfortunate that, it's a good thing financially for people who are ill to get to that point.
I know, I say that all the time.
Okay.
Is this experience going to impact our premium for next year? For stop-loss?
You would think that it would. I'm not sure if it's, you, you know, it's going to go up slightly. I mean, that's what's happening as, as we, it's good for us, it's bad for the insurance.
Right.
How do you do a three-year average or something with that?
On this, it's, the stop-loss insurance is actually an insurance, it's actually a premium-based insurance policy that we have through Anthem. They, I don't know the exact word for it, but they actually, it's like a third-party insurance.
Reinsurance?
Reinsurance, yes. So, I don't, I'm not sure if it's, based on a yearly, you know, it's, it's, it could be. I don't think it's a simple of three years, but it will go up. It will go up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just quickly, I was reading through the Board of Finance package last night. Can you just explain the uncollectible transfer to suspense by the tax collector? Do you, is it fair to ask you that question?
Yeah, that's by statute. So anything that's three, over three years old automatically goes to suspense, it does not mean that it's uncollectible. It's merely, it's, it's a tax record-keeping entry.
Okay.
Interest accrues, and it's still outstanding, it's just the way it's recorded on our financial statements.
Without picking out any na- I mean, there are some, some names that I recognize as sort of still operating and doing business in town.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, would the, would some of these be adjustments due to?
No, they're, they're not adjustments at all. There's no, it's strictly just anything that is from the 2012 grant list or, or priority.
Okay.
Would just be the, actually just the 2012, because it's just a cutoff.
Okay. I mean, I, just, just picking a number, a name at random, I, I noticed a deceased person with an adjustment of $116, I mean, could.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an adjustment, though, it's, it's an uncollected tax.
Okay.
Probably his state hasn't settled yet or something like that.
Well, you.
Or uncollectible?
Uncollectible would be uncollected.
Okay.
It's still outstanding. It could be a remaining balance, a lot of times it's a motor vehicle that may be.
Yeah, okay, it happens to be a motor vehicle.
Yeah.
It's $30,000, I just was curious as to the origination of all those numbers.
You, you may want to check with the tax collector.
Okay.
That may help her collect.
Okay, encouraged. Okay, any other questions for Sheila? All right, do we have a motion to accept Sheila's report?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ed. Town Assessor, Ed Kowinski.
Discuss and take possible action on a ward of RFP 5 dash 1516, the complete reappraisal and reval- reevaluation of all real property taxable and taxes that are effective for grand lists October 1st, 2017.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had two bids, one from Equality at $221,000, one from Northeast at $228,000. Just to give you a little background, both companies are well-qualified to do our revaluation. Equality did our revaluation the last cycle. They are a company that exclusively works in Connecticut only. Northeast works in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and currently has one client, excuse me, one client here in Connecticut. Northeast just hired a new employee who's well-experienced in Connecticut, and that will definitely help their, their activities here. Both companies are familiar with our software. Equality, of course, is more familiar because they wrote it. Northeast, even though this will be their first time working on it, the person that they just hired has worked on our software, or has worked on the Equality software for a number of years and is very familiar with it. Both companies have been in business for a while. Equality since 2003, under Equality's name, but they did exist in prior years under a different name. Northeast, in their current name, has been in business since 2009, but did work under a prior name prior to that. Both companies are very active. Currently, Equality will have approximately six jobs in Connecticut while they are, you know, potentially working in ours. Northeast will have nine jobs that they will be working on, again, in three different states. My recommendation would be for the low bid, Equality at $221,000.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll move that we accept Equality Valuation Services LLC.
Second. Any questions, Terrence?
What was the cost of the last revale contract, do you remember?
I think that was, I want to say 275, but I could get mistaken.
Okay. Is there a reason that the costs are down?
It's almost, it's very difficult to predict costs. Unfortunately, there are a lot of factors, including how many companies are out there actually bidding on a job. Right now, this, our 2017 is what they call a non-physical or update revaluation.
Okay.
Which does not require a lot of people on the ground doing measure and listing, so that's a general factor for keeping the number down. Equality did our job the last cycle, so that's another factor to keep the price down.
What would be the timing for the next physical rebound?
The, well, it's, it's supposed to be in a five-year cycle, so our 2017 is a non-physical, so 2022 is supposed to be a physical. But bear in mind, there, there are options under the statutes that allow us to use data mailers and actually have the intrusion of people actually getting into the properties.
Okay. There's no further questions or discussion, I guess we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Police Chief Jeff, Jeff Hutchinson.
Good morning.
Good morning. Discuss and take possible action to purchase body armor from Guardian Uniform and Supplies. They bid 12 PSX 0315. Approval by the Board and Police Commission.
This might seem familiar to the Board as you recently approved the purchase of body armor through a different vendor on a state bid. What happened is, the manufacturer that we spec'd for the, for the body armor dropped that vendor, and we weren't able to use them. So what we did was, we went out through the state bids, identified another vendor who was able to honor the original price that you approved, just so for procedural matters, because we're going to go with a different vendor, we're bringing it back before you to approve conditionally, because the Police Commission has to approve it Wednesday night. The purchase through Guardian Uniform and Supply for the same price as previously approved, which is 13,806 for the 18 vests that we need to purchase.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Question, just a question. Did we approach the Connecticut-based company?
Yeah, we want.
And they wouldn't match?
Correct.
Okay. I just, if, if there's a preference, we'd rather have somebody paying taxes.
That's unconditional, Police Commission.
Right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Parks and Rec, oh, it's back there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So do you want us to address the all habitat requests here for the weed, weed control lake monopod?
Yeah.
Just to give you an update, we put the vetic barriers in about two weeks ago, and they're, we think they're working, we won't know until we take them out, but they, they give almost 100% guarantee that they will control the weeds there. So they're in the beach area, and so we had received two quotes for the weed control over the other 18 acres that we're going to be doing. 10 acres on the north end of the lake by the boat ramp and, and south of there, and then eight acres around, it's called the shoal area, it's just, just south of the beach in the sort of the center of the lake, it's a very shallow area. Those are the areas that we have been identified where the invasive weeds are that we can attack with the state grant money that we have. So the quotes that came in, one was Solitude Lake Management from Massachusetts at 13,350, the other one was All Habitat Services from Branford at 13,002.25. Not sure why it's 25 cents, but that's what it is.
Two dollars, yeah.
You can round. And so Kevin and I looked at it, along with Greg Bugby, and the Subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Commission, we reviewed the quotes, and we'd like to recommend going with All Habitat for the 13,000, oh, two, twenty-five.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Kevin? Kevin, I notice you're, the environmental impact of any of this? What's your observation?
The contact treatment they're using, so pretty much where they are applying the, the herbicide there, it's basically a stain in that area, it's going to hit the plants there. There is a notification process as part of the permitting, which we're in the process of, which will notify all lake residents of, ahead of time when we're doing the work, and to be cautious a couple days afterwards. But supposedly you can go in the water shortly afterwards, but we just have to warn everybody that this is happening.
Okay, so the lasting effect is not, on anything but the weeds is not.
Just on the weeds, yeah, and the, the volume of the lake is so large that the dilutions happens pretty quickly once you move past where they're applying it.
Now, do the dead weeds gravitate anywhere?
They, there's current on the lake, so stuff would float south, there, there is still an issue on the southern end of the lake, so it's not really going to create a new issue, because there is invasives on that channel heading down towards the end of the lake there, so there's, it's probably working the north side to the south side with the treatment.
Okay.
Not, not, not to prolong it greatly, but the, the process in front of the beach, you said it's 100% guaranteed, what do they do if it doesn't work? How do they honor the guarantee?
That's why we didn't put them in, right, or something.
Put the mats back down, maybe they're not in long enough, or.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We, you know, we didn't have enough to cover all the beach, we covered, we bought 21 of them, and they're five, 10 feet by 50, so it's a lot of square footage that we've covered. And Greg Bugby went with us, we went out in a boat, we put them down, we went over the areas.
Bugby has a DEP.
He's with the agricultural station.
Okay.
Yeah.
Researcher and.
He's been incredible. I just wanted to make a note. He's amazing, amazingly good, yeah. Yeah, he's volunteered all his time with this, and he's a Guilford resident, so he's just doing it to help us out.
Still, he's been unbelievable from what I understand.
Yeah.
Yep.
But they're blankets, and they basically smother the weeds, and they're, they're, we had a concern, it looked like they were floating a little bit, it was hard to tell. There are this rebar that weights them down, so they're supposed to drop down to the bottom, you know, the lake, but it's kind of illusion, when you're looking at it from the beach, it almost looked like they were just under that much water. So I went out with a kayak a week later, and I went over them, and they're, they're at the bottom, you know, I was like, reached out with a paddle, and they're, they're at the bottom of the, they're there. Or some of them I couldn't reach, because they're too deep, you know, with the paddle. So they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're supposed to be sitting right on top of the weeds at the bottom, and, and they kind of smother the weeds and block sunlight and kills the weeds off.
In theory, it's just like you're dropping a tarpon in a yard and sit there for a month or two, and you pull it up, and all your grass is dead, so the same thing we're doing inside the lake there.
Okay, great. Yeah? We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, discuss and take possible action to waive purchasing procedures in contract with Malone of McBroom for oversight of a Cox field renovation.
So Malone McBroom did the design work for us, this is for these two upper fields, the rear fields at Cox that we're renovating, they're stripping the, this, this, this grass out, regrading, and we have options for seed or sod, depending on how, how we look at the bids, but the bids are, are in, I think we had six or eight, I think, Pam, was that about right? I think, six or eight bids that came in, and we're, we're in the process of looking at them, but we want Malone and McBroom's input on helping us select the contractor, and then we would like to have them do the construction administration services, you know, kind of checking periodically during the key, key tasks like grading and irrigation and sodding and seeding, and that kind of thing. They, they come and do inspections periodically. Their proposal was for a bid assistance in construction administration is $8,000, and that would be paid for out of the, the money that's in, in the whole project, you know, for the, for the construction there. So we're requesting that we approve the amending or adding to their contract they currently have with us to do the, this part of the work, the bid assistance and construction administration.
Motion for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm confused. Two-two says, says they're going to provide site inspection by the field designer. Two-o on professional fee says they're going to provide construction administration for $5,000, and the exclusions say they're not going to do construction inspection or contract administration.
You know, I asked that question, because I wonder, what does that mean? Are you doing it or not? That's, that's, when they put that in, that's if they're full-time, somebody at full-time, like with the high school project, they had somebody at full-time overseeing that project. That's what the construction inspection is, because I asked the exact question, you know, because I was concerned about the same thing. The other one is they come, they're not there 24, or, you know, 40 hours a week, they're there during key phases to inspect and, and give guidance.
So they're trying to be there, but not on a full-time basis?
Correct. Correct.
You can make that note in your motion, I think.
As long as you're monitoring, I, I assume you're monitoring, I just thought that was conflicting.
Yeah, I, I thought the same thing, Gary, that's why I asked for clarification on that.
Or, maybe we can, when we sign the contract, maybe we can insert part-time or, or full, insert not full-time, adjust that accordingly? Because that just seems conflicting.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Rick, thank you for the sound system I returned this.
I saw, yeah, it worked out all right? Good, excellent.
Green Committee, Jerry Silver.
Good morning.
Good morning. Remove and from table and take possible action on recommended changes to green use regulations in form.
I move that we remove from the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jerry.
Okay, so, I don't know if you have copies, but since you might have gotten copies, there was a small revision.
Oh.
So I have copies for you, just to go through.
It's not as colorful as yours. It's more trees, Jerry, I don't know. Are these different? Okay, so there's two copies. I've got copies on.
So, first, I went over the regulations at the last meeting, and my understanding that the regulations, you didn't have a prob- you didn't have a problem with the regulations.
Mr. I want to say more. Oh, Jerry, I'm speaking.
I'm sorry. You didn't have a problem with the regulations, I'd be happy to go over them if you want me to go over them again.
No.
No, it was for the fees.
Yeah.
It was the fees that were the issue, so. So let me, let me turn to the fees right now. Actually, I, I looked in years 2014 and 2015 for all the events on the green, and I called a number of those organizations to find out more information about them in terms of if it was a fundraiser or not, whether they had paid staff or not, things like that. And with that, I reorganized the fee schedule and basically changed the criteria with respect to the fee charges. And the fee charges are as follows. The town of Guilford, departments and Guilford schools, no charge. If there's a nonprofit organization with no paid staff, there's no charge. If there's a nonprofit organization with paid staff, and it's a fundraising event, with no entry fee, the charge is $50 per section per day, not to exceed $300 for the total event.
So what would be an example?
Sorry?
What would be an example of that?
I'm, I'm not through the examples, so I'm just going through what the, what the, the criteria are. If it's a nonprofit with paid staff that will charge an entry fee for services or products provided at the event, then it's $50 per section per day, and $30 per exhibitor and concession who are actually charged the fee. So in other words, if, if the exhibitors are not charged the fee, then they don't have, then there's no $30 collected for that. So let me go through a few examples with respect to what this means. Okay? And you have that on the page called Guilford Green Fees for Events.
Jerry, just let me stop you for a second.
Sure.
On the second one with no paid staff, I assume that's interpreted as local. I mean, for instance, the Boy Scouts have paid staff somewhere in national, but there's no local paid staff.
Local, right.
So you're interpreting it that way?
Yes, yes. So, basically, the reason for the, the new fee schedule is, it hasn't been changed since 2005, and the Green Committee, which unanimously approved of this on Friday, would like some more money to maintain the green, because right now, all of the money that the Guilford Green Committee collects from its various fees do not go for maintenance of the green, it's all spent on the trees and other things. So we needed, we'd like to have a little bit more money to maintain the green in a, in a better way. And, and the figures here, you can see that the annual income and the average annual expenses are about the same, and all this goes to other things other than green maintenance. Park and Rec does spend some money in terms of labor and materials with the green, the materials amount to about $2,700, $2,700 or $2,800 for materials, okay? So, what are, what are the examples, for example? For example, the big one is the Arts and Crafts Expo on the Green. They now pay an average of $5,000. With this new fee schedule, they are a nonprofit organization, they have paid staff, they do charge for events on the green. Therefore, there's a charge of $50 per section per day, and $30 for each exhibitor at the art center. So for five sections for three days, which they use, that's 700. So for five sections for three days, which they use, that's $750. And from the, from the number of exhibitors, there are about 183 exhibitors according to when I spoke to the director, that would be $5,400 from the exhibitor fee. And that's because they charge an entrance fee. So this is an additional $1,150 over the $5,000 that they have generally paid on average. Okay, so let's look at the Little Folks Fair. They also charge an entry fee and they use eight sections for one day and they have about four concessions. So their sector fee would be $300 plus a concession fee of $120 for a total of $520. And that's for the Little Folks Fair. For the Jewish festival, they have paid staff, they do not charge an entry fee, they use three sections for one day, so they pay $150 for the sections.
I'm sorry, Jerry, the Little Folks Fair?
Yeah.
You say that their sector fee is 300 plus a commission of 120?
Right.
For a total of 520? Shouldn't that be 420?
420, that's a, that's a typo.
But concession is for the concessions they have, the number?
Yeah, that they charge for.
What do they pay now?
Sometimes they pay, sometimes they don't, so, so it's hard to say what they pay now, you know? But it's been hit or miss when I went over the numbers.
Tracy's shaking her head.
No, they always pay.
They, yep.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, it wasn't recorded by the finance office then?
No, they, they do pay, though, I know.
Okay.
When we take it every year.
Do you know what they pay, Tracey? It's like an average number.
I have it, but it's probably around the 300 change range.
Yeah, okay.
They have eight sections for one day and now the charge is $40 a section, so it's eight times 40.
Three twenty.
Yeah.
I mean, it really is running, some people are being charged that weren't charged before and the ones that are going up, you're talking a 20% increase.
I have a question. So are we, are you, does the Parks and Rec reimburse now from the green money that are raised currently?
It goes to the Green Committee.
So who's paying Rick back for the money? The Parks, Parks and Rec maintains it.
It's in their budget.
It comes in their budget.
So what, what money is the Greens Committee spending then?
The Greens right now doesn't spend any money.
That's the point, they're not spending any money, so we're just trying to get some money so that they can do some further.
But they do get money.
They do get money, but that money goes to other things now than maintenance of the green.
That's what I mean, so you're using that money?
Yeah, it goes for things like maintenance of the trees, it goes for things like, what did I have here?
Jerry, I think we got some sidewalk maintenance.
Trees, lamp, bench, sidewalks.
Sidewalk maintenance, you know?
How much money is in your account now?
Something like $30,000.
And you're anticipating an increase of 7,000? I guess I'm trying to understand.
The, the increase would be...
Over and above what Parks and Rec is doing.
Over and above what Parks and Rec is. Okay, so when I get, went through this fee schedule that I was going through and I totaled up the numbers, it came out to $8,070. The old fee schedule raised about $5,000.
Right.
Okay. None of which went into lawn maintenance. The difference of $3,070 doesn't meet a goal which we established when we said we needed some additional money for materials and that was $4,219. But as we said, we do have some reserves that we can make up the difference.
But for what, I guess I'm trying to understand for what?
Lawn maintenance.
But, but, just so, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to understand. So Parks and Rec is maintaining the lawn and you folks are doing the trees, lamp, bench, sidewalk, what's the additional lawn maintenance costs for? I'm trying to understand, what can Parks and Rec not do that they're, I want to know what the disconnect is.
The additional money, we estimate it at seven, about $7,000 excluding labor and that includes spot seeding of about 30,000 square feet in the bare spots and fertilizer, compost and overseeding of 300,000 square feet, which is about the seven acres of the park. So it's an entire overseeding once a year and spot seeding of the bare spots and the fertilizer and some compost which we have.
And that's a total of seven.
So you're saying...
And that's a total of seven.
So Rick, you're saying that you guys can't do, it's fine, I just tried to understand, you can't do that?
I think we, we do, I think the goal is to do three or four times a year, we do twice, a good year we can do it twice, fertilizing.
Yeah.
And I think the, the goal of the Green Committee was to try to do that more, to, you know, to get the nutrients into the soil better than what we're able to do right now.
Well, and the other goal, quite frankly, is, is financial. I mean, the people that are using it and profiting for it, you know, contribute to pay for it, they're, other than just the taxpayer.
Right.
I mean, that's, to be frank, that's what it comes down to.
Right, because there's stress on the green from these.
And there are people that are profiting from it, I mean, I know some of them are nonprofits, but it is, you know?
Right. We try, we try to sort of make it both uniform and fair in terms of...
No, and I'm not disagreeing with that part, I'm trying to understand where there's a disconnect with what's being done now versus what you're trying to do, which is I understand you're trying to do...
And transfer some of the cost to the users.
No, I understand, yeah, I got that.
One of the things that people, a lot of people don't know is that the green does not use any toxic lawn pesticides. So it's, it's taken care of without use of toxic pesticides, which I researched that area and there's, there's considerable issues about health effects and little toddlers and infants and people walking around.
You don't want a bunch of the flags that you would have to put up, you know?
Right.
I think that was a good decision made a number of years ago, right?
That's right, that's right.
Have you contacted, you had some examples here. Most of these people know this is coming?
Yes.
And their reaction?
Oh, well, the, the Chamber of Commerce, was it Brian from the Chamber of Commerce was here at the Guilford Green Committee meeting? And he had some questions about this, but I think that when he saw what the fee schedule would actually be, it was a lot less than the previous one and, and it wasn't that big a hit. So he didn't have, you know, he kind of...
The Chamber of Commerce is supposed to be made up of business people, they know what's going on.
Right.
No, that one's not. How about the Little Folks Fair? Have you contacted them? Because I know they work on a very small...
I think, I think, did I contact them?
It sounds like it's only a hundred dollar increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have...
I don't remember right now. I think I did, but...
And the Guilford Civic Women, I don't see here, but again, I'm not saying anybody's...
Civic Women don't pay anything because they, they, they don't have any paid staff.
No paid, no charge.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion or motion?
I would move that we approve the revised recommended changes to green use and regulations and fees.
Second.
I had to have, when would they take effect?
Well, the ones that have already been approved are not subject to this.
So tomorrow.
Huh?
They expect tomorrow. If we approve this today, it takes a...
Well, you're saying but the ones that already have been approved, you're not going to make changes, so...
I understand that, but...
Right, there's no, it's sort of a, they're grandfathered in, so to speak.
I understand that, but anything that comes in tomorrow is a new fee. Is that what I'm saying, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's up to you.
So why don't we make it effective, what's, March, July, June 1? Or July 1 with the new schedule?
Tracy, would it be safe to say that anybody that was holding an event this summer or fall would probably have already applied and that type of thing?
Yeah, there may be one or two that haven't, but...
I say July 1, this way there's, they, they could put people on notice, Charlie, in case somebody wants to do it.
I don't have a problem with that.
There's got to be some notice.
Or you could just start with 2017 events, start like yearly...
Well, I think 30, you know, 45 days is not unreasonable. You know, that, that way we take advantage of the holidays.
For anybody that hasn't already applied, so...
A hundred bucks on that process.
All right, so Jerry, I said July 1.
Anybody that applies on or before July 1.
Right.
Okay? That amends your motion.
Then a lot of people may start putting in their applications now for 2017.
Then we know what's happening, right?
No, 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 then it shouldn't be. It should be, then, let me rephrase that then. So the, the new fees go into effect July 1 for any organization, for any organization that hasn't already applied for the remainder of 16, but all new fees alone to affect July 7, 2017, whether they've applied or not. You know what I'm trying to say? Because otherwise, you're right.
No, July...
You know what I'm saying, Gary?
Yes. You're saying you don't want somebody applying two years in advance to freeze their fee.
Correct, just to get in before July 30.
Right.
So it's, it's a...
We only do it on an annual basis.
Okay. You're going to have, by giving them 45 days, you may have somebody that is that astute will apply in that 45 days and that's what, you know, yes or no, do you want to do that or not? I mean, I thought it was going to be tomorrow, but now we put it off 45 days. Yes, you might have people...
This is not going to apply to a lot of people, I mean, one or two. I mean...
You're probably right.
Let's make it effective.
But they can't, they can't apply like two years in advance.
That's what I mean, yeah.
No, it's only one year, you understand that.
Let's make it, make it effective tomorrow.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Well, we have a motion, a second on the floor, so. Do you want to amend your motion?
Sure.
To what?
I, just June 1 then, I guess I'm just going to give some notice, I guess, I don't know.
June 1. And then we'll find out how many people adjust that order.
But wait, we don't have another meeting anyway till June, so...
I'll second the amendment to make it effective June 1.
Right.
Thank you.
Do we have a vote before we trade your...
Well, I just want to say thank you to the Green, please pass my thank you to the Green Committee for all their work and my questions are just so I can understand, the public can understand what the rationale is and what the work that goes into this, because I don't think people realize the effort that goes into maintaining the green that we all enjoy and love. So I think they need to understand what that is, so I appreciate your explaining and those, those are my questions coming from.
No, thank you.
Okay, the motion is to approve the new fees effective June 1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, consider and take possible action to set a public hearing June 16, 2016, 8:30 a.m. at Town Hall to consider program that shall be included in the 2016 State of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Program. Do we do public hearings at 8:30 or 8:15?
I think...
Public hearings at 8:30 because they're part of the meeting, but the town meetings are early.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, request for use of town property.
I move that we approve the two uses of town property, or actually it's, it may be three, there's, there's a, Park and Rec is a sort of a double approval as listed in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Correspondence, we all have Public Works Department and building officials report. We also, I think everyone received a letter from somebody, Mr. Sperry.
Mr. Timmsberry.
And somebody else, he added another signature over the weekend or something to it regarding the trucks and vendors on the green. We have copies of it and that'll be available online today. So we entered in as correspondence. The old business?
Are they, they asking that we enter it in or do we have to read it?
I think they asked that we entered, make part of the record, right? I could be wrong.
Okay. Did it be read into the record?
Do you want to read it?
No. I would only comment after a brief discussion with counsel that there are some, part of it is objection to some terms which are statutory terms, however obsolete, the terms that they, they objected to as being ugly and not representative of the town are legal terms under the statutes of the State of Connecticut, so, you know, it may sound lousy, but it's the law.
The only other thing I know about this is that there has been some discussions since our last meeting regarding the, the trucks and I believe the police commission is going to be reviewing it further.
So suffice to say, Charles, a work in progress, right? A lot of questions up and raised.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, we had no other, over any new business. Any committee reports?
Can I just make one comment? We did check, $320 was deposited into the Green account for the Little Folks Fair.
Okay, so maybe like a hundred dollars.
Just to let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Must have hit a sore point. Everybody went, ran out, what do we do?
Never accuse the flight its department of missing.
Not while, not while they're in the room, right. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, public forum, I don't see anybody in the audience.
Would you adjourn?
Gary, oh...
The only comment I will make, on behalf of the GIV, what's the group? The Guilford Interfaith Volunteers, they, they wanted to publicly thank the Park and